Good Tuesday evening, everyone. The September 7th, 2021 special meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Board Member Cummings, will you please read our commitment statement?
Yes, ma'am. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please remove your hats and turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Don Browning, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Please join me in standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The purpose of this meeting is to hold public hearings on the final millages and budget for the 2021-2022 school year. The budget process involves public hearings to be held in the following order: A, rolled-back rate computation and tentative budget amended to conform to final budget; B, resolution determining revenues and millages levied, Resolution Number 21-06; and C, final budget, Resolution Number 21-07. If you wish to address the board regarding one of the public hearings, there is a special form to be completed on which you will need to select the appropriate areas of concern. Good evening, Dr. Gullett.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Nice to see all of you. I recommend approval of the agenda for the September 7th, 2021 special school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation? So moved. Moved by Board Member Campbell. Seconded by Board Member Cummings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Before proceeding with the final year 2021-2022 budget hearings, we need to finalize the final year 2020-2021. Now I have a motion to approve Final Budget Resolution Number 10 for the fiscal year 2020-2021.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Board Member Cummings, seconded by Vice Chair King. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the financial report. May I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report for year ending June 2021?
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair King, seconded by Board Member Campbell. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. The Chair recognizes Superintendent Gullett to begin the budget public hearing process.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the board. The total millage to be levied is greater than the rolled-back rate by 4.39%. The required local effort millage rate is greater than the rolled-back rate by 2.89%. Each school board participating in the state allocation of funds for the current operation of schools must levy the millage set for its required local effort from property taxes. As a result of work sessions held by the board since the adoption of the tentative budget of $698,477,873 on July 27, 2021, the following changes have been made and have been incorporated into the proposed final budget. For major changes, including net increase in revenue due to the following: elementary and secondary emergency relief funds, federal funding known as ESER II, and other federal grants; reclassification of major school internal accounts based on change in accounting standards; also net increases in expenditures due to the following: expenditures associated with, again, ESER II and other federal grants; reclassification of major school internal accounts based on the change in accounting standards; the Reddick School demolition; and encumbered purchase orders carryover. There are changes in the fund balance due to the following: actual revenue and expenditures recorded in July for the prior fiscal year. The following attachments have been added to the rolled-back computation, including memo, changes from the tentative to the final budget, the certification and compliance, the public hearing certification, and the fiscal year 2021-2022 final budget publication, which is to be published on Marion County Public Schools website on September 8, 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation that the board amend the adopted tentative budget to conform to the proposed final budget for fiscal year 2021 and 2022? So moved. Moved by Board Member Campbell.
Seconded.
Seconded by Board Member Cummings. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the board concerning the rolled-back rate and/or amended tentative budget? Do we have any?
We do not.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion, board? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Dr. Gullett.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the board. The School Board of Marion County, Florida proposes a total millage rate of 6.9030, which is greater than the rolled-back rate of 6.6128 mills by 4.39%. I recommend the board adopt Resolution 21-06, Determining Revenue and Millages, to be levied for fiscal year 2021-2022.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation that the board adopt Resolution 21-06, Determining Revenues and Millages Levied, for fiscal year 2021-2022?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the board concerning the millages? Don't have anyone?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any further discussion, board? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Dr. Gullett.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the board. I recommend the board adopt Resolution 21-07, Affirming the Final Budget for Fiscal Year 2021-2022, in the amount of $746,566,213.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation that the board adopt Resolution 21-07, Affirming the Final Budget for Fiscal Year 2021-2022, in the amount of $746,566,213? So moved. Moved by Vice Chair King. Seconded by Board Member Cummings. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the board concerning the final budget?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to acknowledge the receipt and approve the annual financial report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2021?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Board Member Cummings, seconded by Board Member Campbell. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
If you like, at this point, we can do board comments and concerns.
Okay.
There are some things I know you need to address.
So we don't have to close out this part before the...
No, not this part.
Okay. All right. Well, we will move on then to board comments and concerns.
Wait, did you do eight one today? Is that the one we did?
Yes.
Okay. All right, sorry. I've got to...
Thank you, Vice Chair King. Good to have backup.
They're paying attention. That's right.
Okay. I do have a couple of things just on the administrative side. We need to have an executive session regarding MEA, MESP, and IUPAT. Attending will be Dr. Gullett, Mr. Vianello, Teresa Boston Ellis, J.C. Oliver, and Brent Carson. The suggestion is to have it this Thursday, September 9, right after the work session. So if everyone is good with that, then we can let everyone know that it's a go.
Yes, I have sent invitations out.
Okay. Okay. And I believe everyone did receive that invitation. Okay. All right, great. And then the next one is, and this is a great time to welcome again new board member, Don Browning. Thank you so much for answering the call.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me, and it's been a real roller coaster trying to catch up with where the board is with the media material that's out there, and that's been a huge help that we didn't have in the old days. But we have it now, and it's... I felt as though I was actually in the room, and I would hope that there would be a comment, and there was, and I said, wow, those people are sharp. They're thinking exactly the way I would like to see it happen. So I'm working to catch up. I don't want the board to have to slow up for me to catch up. So I'm putting in that effort, and I really appreciate and ask for help in this procedure because we're... It's my goal to make this the premier school district in the state of Florida.
Thank you.
That's my goal.
Thank you, Board Member Browning. And yes, it's clear to me that anyone that does acrobatics with airplanes is a daredevil and a perfect fit for this board.
You'd call it unusual attitude recovery, and it's an important skill to have if you go up no matter what.
That's right. That's right. And actually, with that in mind, we do want to set each new board member that joins us up for success, and I think on behalf of the rest of the board, we can definitely affirm that the new board member trainings that each of us were able to go through to help us build cohesion as a team was very helpful. And the Florida School Boards Association stands ready to do a refresher for us, and it'll be four hours. I think it'll be a time well spent. I believe that they'd be willing to do a hybrid version. The choices are usually governance or communication and culture. Each time a new member joins a team, it's a new dynamic, and we want to continue to be able to work really well and productively together and enjoy this challenge. So I just need to get consensus from everyone that we would like to do that, and then we'll look at getting it scheduled based on Florida School Boards Association representatives' availability and our availability as well. So I just need consensus.
Yes, I'm certainly on board with that.
Great.
And I was going to make that recommendation as well. I remember waiting six or seven months before having that training, and I could have certainly used it much, much sooner than that, so I welcome that as soon as possible.
Awesome. And the rest of you?
Yeah, you have a consensus.
Okay. All right, great. So we'll go ahead and work to get that scheduled and accommodate everyone's schedule. Okay. And Ms. Martinez-Lopez, is there anything else that I'm forgetting?
Got it all. Thank you.
All right. Well, I'm one for 12. Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and do our usual round the room, and we'll start with Board Member Campbell. Good evening.
Thank you. Just a couple of things for me. First thing is, thank you for appointing me as the legislative liaison. I wanted to give an update on where that is moving forward. So I've so far met with three of our state representatives, one-on-one. One actually did school visits on Friday, and I have a couple of additional school visits that are coming next week. So not only are they willing to meet with us, but they're also interested in actually visiting our schools. So ran into Reverend Cummings and Dunellen High School on Friday, and so with Representative Harding, that was a wonderful opportunity for him to see three of our schools. And then we also will have Representative McLean visiting a couple of schools next week, as well as Representative Hayes Henson will also be visiting some schools. So thank you for that. If you want to know those dates and times, I certainly can send that out to you if you're interested in possibly coming along at this juncture until we kind of know what our plan is going to be. We're going to talk about that on Thursday, just kind of throwing out some ideas and hearing what their platforms are as well and what they're interested in. And the only other thing I had was in reference to... Well, first of all, welcome, Board Member Browning. It's a pleasure to have you with us. But I also wanted to mention the school board work session coming up on September 23. If you all will recall, in the last board meeting, we just approved for FSBA training, and that actually is one of the two days of training that I will be in Kissimmee on that September 23 date. There are a couple of things on that agenda that I would really love to be a part of the discussion if possible, but I didn't know if moving that date was agreeable with anyone else's calendar. I believe there's also additional training or... Excuse me. I think FADS is having a day with the Education Commissioner that day as well, so it's a scheduling conflict for me for sure. I didn't know if Board Member Browning was going to be going to the first FSBA training that he would have the ability to go to or not, if we would have the ability for him to go to that. But I believe that two-day training is board governance and bargaining and those... All three of you, I know, have attended those before and know that they only are offered one time a year, and you can only get them September 23 and 24 right now. So I definitely want to be a part of that training.
I would like to as well. Is that... What is the protocol to join that or one of these legislative sessions once we know the dates or we know the time? What's the protocol to do that in reference to, say, the Sunshine Line?
Right. As far as our legislator visits, I think it's really great, Board Member Campbell, that you've done that outreach and are getting commitments from our legislators to actually come and visit schools and see what we're dealing with. And I agree with you, it would be great to, when you have any days finalized, maybe to just email our board secretary, and then she can send them out to us, and, you know, we don't have to be walking with each other, and it can be noticed that way, and then any of us will be able to join as we are able. And please let them know that they would be more than welcome to ride with me on a bus. And I think they would find that quite enlightening, and it is important if we're going to have all these levels of communication, we want everybody in the loop as to what our challenges are and the excitement that we have for doing what we do. So that would be the answer, I think, to the legislative aide visits.
So it's open and appropriate. That's great.
Yes, as long as it's publicly noticed and we follow procedure that way.
Okay.
Okay.
And so the procedures, though, are not via the individual, it's via the...
It'll be through our board secretary.
Through the board secretary.
Yes, contacting each board member.
Excellent.
Yep. Yep. And then as far as the Florida School Boards Association, yes, to become a certified board member, which is very excellent and valuable training that all of us have gone through, you can get it done in a year, but it is a big-time commitment. And I remember when I did it, it did take me away from some meetings, so that was some give and take, and I just had to trust that my other board members would be able to soldier on without me. I'm a little concerned about the timing on the 23rd because we have our construction projects update, district offices that we've been talking about for years and trying to get some traction on, our usual COVID-19 updates, the FSAT presentation with Mr. McFattan, and that has to be related to school safety and security. So, and the annual Public Education Foundation report. And I want to be mindful, too, you know, it's a conundrum because we have one, two, three, four district folks that are preparing to present, and then we have a very valuable training that we don't want board members to miss. And thankfully, we have YouTube where at least you can look at the meetings afterwards, and nothing is ever discussed, set in stone, and then never talked about again. At least that's not how this board operates. So I'd like to get some input from the rest of you. It is one of those things where especially, I guess I'm leaning towards going ahead and having the work session because we just have so much going on, and it is hard to think about... Look at the future agendas, and it's like, okay, well then, when and where would we do it? And a lot of these have timelines when it comes to rulemaking and that type of thing. So I'm open to think it through with everyone's input.
My first commitment is to this board and to this business. That's number one. And if I can fit the other end, I'll work with the secretary. I need to know the dates, the time, that type of thing, but rest assured, it won't even be a close call for me that I'll be at this first.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings.
If there's a gap, then I'll go in another direction because I feel very strongly about the commitment to enhancing the opportunities for the students on so many fronts, and we're at a critical time. This is not a routine time.
Thank you, sir. Any other input?
No, I agree, and I commend Mr. Browning for recognizing that, that you're definitely showing where your commitment shows is lying. And then in December, they'll have, like, the Florida School Board Association, they'll have a meeting, and you'll learn a lot then and learn some operations. And these classes, they do have them like once a year, every two years. So it's not like a deadline where you have to get it immediately. So I appreciate and thank you for putting your focus right here, right now, because we are, as you said, critical, critical times. Thank you, sir.
And the input is just... It's incredible. There's certain things that I believe I bring to the table, business and science, and a few things like that, and view on America. Having started back in the day when I was serving, it was President Eisenhower. So that gives you a little bit of a clue, and I'm just very... I feel very strongly about it. And I can make a contribution where I can, and I will fit in with you all, and that's going to be a home run. I'll make these other things work to the extent the secretary and I can pull that together.
Okay. All right, thank you. So I think we have consensus that we will go ahead and stick to that date due to a multitude of important reasons, and then we'll just move forward from there.
Thank you, Chair Thrower. So I'd let the record show that on September 23, I will be absent for that work session. I do believe there is some input that we potentially could discuss in our work session on Thursday that I think will be pertinent, that you will be talking about on the 23 as we're preparing our potential legislative agenda for what we want to talk about, and I think there's an opportunity for us there. So we'll just have that conversation on Thursday instead of the following Thursday.
Sounds great.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Attorney Powers, anything from legal this evening?
Nothing from legal, I'm happy to report.
Okay. And I'm happy to hear that. Okay. Board Member Cummings.
I just want to welcome Mr. Browning again to the board.
Yes, sir.
And no comments tonight, but looking forward to the work we're going to do together, so...
I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Vice Chair King.
And I also welcome to the board. We're so grateful that you are here, and when you said that you want to be part of our premier school board, thank you so much because this board wants nothing more than that, too, and so we're just grateful you're here.
Well, we'll get there, and if... On any endeavor that I'm involved in, or most folks are involved in, there are obstacles, and identifying them allow you to focus in and do your very best to eliminate an obstacle. And typically, I get to the plate and hit a home run if I can, and if I can't, I can get in the way of a pitch, get on first, somebody else can hit it in. And so that's just sort of the way I roll, and I'm very excited about the opportunity for the kids going forward.
Yeah. It's an honor, really. Thank you. Dr. Gullett.
I'm not done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not done. I want to thank... I also want to thank Teresa Boston Ellis and her team. Another outstanding year... Oh, yeah. I know. So we're just grateful, and thank you for all your hard work and dedication to make sure that we meet our deadlines and our budgets and everything. So thank you. And I'm good now.
Okay. Thank you. We didn't want to leave out...
No.
All right. Dr. Gullett.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I, too, wanted to thank Ms. Boston Ellis and the team. I have said this before publicly, without a strong CFO and a strong team, we wouldn't be in the condition we're in, so I thank them. And I want to welcome Board Member Browning. Board Member Browning, you are joining a very strong board that's sole purpose is doing what's best for students, and I know already that you echo that and have a commitment to the students of this community, so welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett, and Elena Martinez Lopez.
Just one clarification. I just wanted to make sure that we were all processing the same thing. Ms. Campbell's going to be going to the governance the 23rd and 24th. Mr. Cummings will be going on the 24th for just the bargaining portion of it. On that particular one, because it goes over the $500 threshold, we can't put it on a packet in order, unfortunately, for our Board Member Browning to attend that because it has to be board-approved prior to, per statute.
Right.
So I just wanted to make sure that we're all aware that we'll have to see when the next...
So I can understand it?
So on any conference, board travels, if it's over $500, it has to be board-approved prior to. So like Ms. Campbell was attending the meeting, this had to go on a board packet and get prior approval in order to go ahead and attend this. So unfortunately, we're kind of like behind the eight ball on this one in order for you to attend this particular session, but I will see when...
Is that...
He's not going to attend it.
Yeah, he's not going to attend it anyway.
So he's not.
I'm thinking I'm not... But just so I can understand what you just said, is the... This cost, is that to do with something they're charging? What is the cost?
The actual enrollment fee, the hotel, anything that goes over $500 has to be board-approved.
Okay.
Oh, so I was confused. It wasn't that he wanted to attend the 23rd.
That's correct.
Okay.
So in other words, your attendance for this particular session, it's already too late. So you're off the hook, and you weren't going to do it anyway.
But if Board Member Cummings is going on the 24th, there potentially could be opportunity for him to go there because that would not be over $500. Would that be correct?
That is correct.
If you wanted to go only on the Friday session.
Great point. Great point. And these trainings, they do cost the district money. However, the trainings, we have found, to be invaluable, and also the connections that we make with other board members around the state and other superintendents. So it's definitely time well spent, and that's a great point, Board Member Campbell, that if you did choose to go on the 24th, then that would be an option, and you could speak with Elena further about that opportunity.
Then that's exactly how I would do it. If I can just categorically set the conditions that I'm here, if I'm not here, I'm available because that's where I am. So if we can have that set, just make it legal so it works out in terms of timing and protocols, and I'm good to go.
I will check the deadline on that, so see if you can attend on the 24th.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'll get with you.
Thank you.
Great. And we know you'll find them valuable. Okay. Was there anything else?
That's it. That's all I have.
All right, good. Yes, I just have quickly to share some thanks. We continue to be operating in extraordinary times. We had some marginally better news as far as our numbers from last week. We're starting to see a decrease. On behalf of this board, we hope and pray that everyone had a great Labor Day weekend and did a lot of things outside in the fresh air and took good care of yourselves while you did it, and in seven to 10 days, we'll see what our numbers look like. But it does seem like we are over the hump. Let's pray that that's the case. I just wanted to give a huge thank you to so many in our community, too, that have been emailing us and calling and helping and donating. It's really been incredible. This crisis has been terrible, but the way it has helped unite the community has been wonderful to witness. wonderful to witness. And it hasn't been easy. You know, we've definitely had our thoughts and our positions on certain things, but in the end, we've always agreed from the beginning that it is about giving kids the best quality education we can give them, which the vast majority means face-to-face, five days a week, you know, with steady leadership. And, Dr. Gullett, thank you for, I remember from working at the district level and serving at schools and that dual role. When you work in the district, you actually do work and have a job. And when you're taking your time and then also volunteering at schools to try to help in clinics and wipe down tables and help in classrooms, whatever everyone's been doing, you know, 65, 75 hours a week has become the norm. And I really want to acknowledge every single person in our school system for just really stepping up, jumping in, and helping keep our schools open. And I'm really looking forward to the day when this is behind us and we can focus on the more typical challenges that we'll always have running a public school system. But for right now, I would say considering our challenge, challenges, we are really pulling together and doing all that we can in our own ways. And that's really what it comes down to. Thanks again to everyone. We will see you again on Thursday for our work session. We're kind of out of the normal pattern here with this special board meeting tonight. But we will be together again on Thursday. And Board Member Browning, our work sessions last a long time, so you don't even have to pack a lunch anymore. We provide it.
Thank you. May I?
Yes, sir.
I've spent a lot of time on video, so I have a history of what the board's been working on. And then I have a pretty good understanding of the actual steps we'll be going through in the future, addressing what you were just talking about, this situation we've got health-wise. And I just want to say that I want to blend in science all I can. And there is ionic solutions. That's electrons flying through the air, solving atmospheric, cleaning atmosphere in any building. And the second thing is funding, which is current. I, we just dealt with it tonight. We're dealing with it in the future, and we've dealt with it in the past. And the idea that we come from, the center of our county is Brick City. And we have a, we perhaps have a source of some bricks. And there's things, there's some things going on in the art world where an individual brick may be considered a brick. But there's, bricks, like Chicago bricks, can become incredibly valuable. So I'm just going to bring that type of thing forward. And I'd like everybody to dig deep and think about revenue and just think about this beautiful legacy we have. And you get into a Salvador Dali kind of a thing where things that might be $10 are $100 or $1,000. And we happen to have a mine right here in Marion County. So I'll just throw that out.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. We have many, many good things to look forward to, lots of excitement in the air. And, you know, it's been challenging, but I can really think of no better time to be serving on the Marion County School Boards. You know, leadership is easy when there's not much going on. And we certainly have had our share.